Let the record reflect that I've taken a role that members John Barr and Joe Thorpe are absent today, but we do have a quorum, so we will proceed. The minutes from June the twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-two have been printed, posted, and circulated. Are there any corrections to the minutes? No objections in the minutes will stand approved as posted. We'll move into unfinished business, the water quality testing.
Back on the text, so they're good.
We did have a meeting with the people that put out the reports, and we asked them to go a little deeper with their clarifications. And so they've they've made some tweaks to it. It's a little easier to understand now. I told him, I said, you know, I'm not a scientist. I don't understand a lot of that, so could you please dumb it down? And so the lady was very nice, and so she's made it easier to read, so hopefully the public will understand it better now, so. I did notice in yesterday's paper that, or online, wherever it was, that someone has now determined a way to take those forever chemicals out of the water. Now, it's in early testing stages, but according to the article that I read, it appears like it is a very simple process, so this may turn out to be way better than we thought. So I'm anxious to go to the next water quality meeting and see what Paul has to say about that. But if there's a way, you know, to take those forever chemicals out, it breaks down the chain, you know, that chemical chain is so complicated, complex. But whatever this process is, it breaks it down, and so I'm very encouraged that, you know, there may be a way that we'll all get a little relief from that, so we'll need to keep an eye on that. The ARP discussion, I have some numbers I'd like to share with you today. This is as of today. The city of Vienna received two million, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars, two million, six hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars as our share of the American Rescue Plan distribution. To date, City Council has authorized three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the River Road project, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the River Road project, and three hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars for the purchase of the three new pumps for the pump station. That's a total of one million, thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. So the current balance that the city has left in the ARP fund is one million, five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars. I do know that there's been a commitment for the Forty-Fifth Place Water Renovation, so of that one million, six hundred thousand, there will be money taken out of it to fund the Forty-Fifth Place project. So at this point, I have no idea what the Forty-Fifth Place project will cost. I know earlier when we were talking about, we thought two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand, but who knows what the number will be now, but at any rate. And so far, out of our expenses, out of out of the money that we have, the only amount of money that has been paid is to the Allen Stone Company for their first draw for the River Road project of two hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars. So the bid for the River Road project was eight hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. There've been a couple glitches in there. I'm expecting that we'll get a change order somewhere down the line for some minor issues that have come up, but basically, you know, eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars was the target number that we started at. We received a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the Wood County Commission, and so with that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and the seven hundred and five thousand dollars that was allocated by the city, we've already accounted for eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars towards that eight hundred and ninety thousand dollar project, so depending on how it ends up with these change orders, we're right now obligated for sixty thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. Okay? All right? So I am of the opinion that we need to move forward with the Stormwater Project on Twenty-Eighth Street. I know that Mike, a couple weeks ago, or last month, I should say, made a presentation, and, you know, the phases and what they are. If I'm not mistaken, Mike, that project, to get started, it's a hundred and forty thousand? I believe, it's, I think it's a hundred and forty, if not a hundred and sixty, but it's right there, okay? So my suggestion is that we, as the board, take a vote to approach council to see if out of the remaining one million, six hundred thousand dollars, that they will fund that store, that Twenty-Eighth Street Stormwater Project to get it started. Because if we don't get it started, we're never gonna get it done. Okay? Craig?
Yeah, that's fine. That's our, you know, we think we determined that was our end project. If we do it or we don't, so.
Right. I mean, but Burgess and Nyquil can't get started until we sign the task order, and that's, that's the issue with that, okay? So Kim?
I entertain a motion that we approach council for the money to start the Twenty-Eighth Street project.
Second. We moved to second, that we apply to council for ARP funds to do the Twenty-Eighth Street Stormwater Drainage Improvement. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, then I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, any motion carries unanimously. I will try to get that on the the agenda for this coming Thursday. Okay? We'll see. Should it start Doodle Monday, so we should be able to get it in there. Okay? All right? Any other questions on the ARP money? All right. So the Five-Year Plan is an open-ended item on our agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to add to the Five-Year Plan? Okay? All right? The River Water, River Road Water Main Project Update. Craig?
Yeah, there's a couple things going on. This coming Wednesday, next week, they will be starting and completing the boring, I mean, road tracks from Longsdale Drive over to the west side of John Menzel property, plant side. The road, they want to isolate, close the road down from Thirty-Second Street to Twenty-Eighth Street, and they're looking at a three to four day period to beat that project. Keep in mind, if you have your friends or if you're posted online, this department is about to send out a personal notification, so that should take care of that, and that should finish up that section, to make the boring, to tie in the water line in, to set the hydrant. And I did get a call from Bud Roberts last week or this week, referred to request any water service at the residence of Longsdale Drive, which y'all assumed that would happen, and it did. I told him he would have to make a formal request of everybody that want water and present to utility, so maybe that is, that's just designed to do that, is every design. That's just a matter of a two-inch line in, and I'm deposit, actually, that house, so that house, do it out, that all parts of it. There's like six or seven houses or some services that we need. So when they present that, we'll look at options of pricing. Way to go, so. The, we did have some issues, two issues that we're still dealing with. One was the Twenty-First Street tie-in. That's the only line that we have not been able to shut down. Worked on it last week, weeks ago, for a couple of days, trying to get isolated out. We had most of town shut down, but we did not have Twenty-First shut down. Where the waters come from, be honest with you, it it was, cut the flow down, but didn't isolate it all out. He's joking because the crews, I, it was us doing the water line, we'd probably jumped in, cut it down under that mouth pressure. They didn't, contract chose not to do that. They don't want any water to deal with. But we had a couple of options. I know that the contract did reach out to Parkersburg and looked at possibly doing a line stop in that location, isolate this line down till they install a valve or us coming in, city crews, and actually reduce the pressure, had to install a valve ourselves. Either one will work. We're used to working under pressure, I guess, or not, so. It is a four-inch transside line, so it wouldn't have been very manageable with a couple back trucks. Next issue is the price index, versus asphalt, has gone up quite a bit. And the, when they bid the asphalt, which we talked about, this being, it is gone up a lot. And they're looking about asking if did that contract, if we could pay for the price increase in asphalt. Get that price to me, and I think you all leave discussing. But that's, we all know that everyone's kind of, it's hard, so. Let's say, complete the boring job, and the contract will be come in and start to be maybe. Should be John Brown asphalt at this time. It might go to sales, but sure, I can have John Brown. Anything else hooked up, Twenty-Eighth Street, Twenty-Third Street, Twenty-Seventh Street, and the new hydrant, everything at Twenty-Eighth Street, it's all in place and online. Because by some reason, we've had so many breaks lately, and that particular area does increase the amount of flow pressure.
Why is there an open hole in front of Bobby Marshall's garage? Yeah, but, I mean, this thing's gonna be down for a few days. I mean, they're not supposed to be back until, what, twenty-fourth?
Uh, they're gonna be back, with the boring. We're hoping to start back getting it on Monday or Tuesday.
Okay.
So they barricaded off, but they're we're gonna try to isolate the system down again, house, install a tap on the existing line, see what kind of pressure it's gonna have.
Is there no way to put a steel plate or something over the top of that, too?
I could request that, really.
Well. Yeah, but you know what I'm saying? I, a yellow piece of caution tape around, I don't know how deep that hole is, because I didn't go look. But, yeah, that that hole's not that big. It's, I don't know, six by six, four by six, whatever it is, it's not really very big. But somebody comes down through there and falls in that hole. I, I mean, there's an excavator sitting there, and there's yellow tape around it. I know, I mean, I don't know what else you could do, but. Okay? It's just, it's just a concern.
Make hits in that area.
It says there's a church right across the street.
Said even with caution tape and the signs, you have a legal area, won't, uh, break the, practical nuisance law, says that areas where you have something that is, wanna say readily available, but something that shows
Yeah, well, right.
Just be aware, it's a higher standard of care.
Touch, touch base with them.
Sure.
And see if they're gonna, if they're not gonna be closing that hole up, we need to cover it. Okay? I just don't know what else to do. If we can't get it done until Monday, then we'll have to live with it, you know?
Whether it's on Friday, so I know it's not gonna get done today, so.
Yeah, okay. Well, if, like I say, just touch base with them, please. All right? Any other questions on the River Road? Okay? Forty-Fifth Place Water Main Replacement. So this past week, I met with Mr. Palmerankey, who is the landowner where the water line has to go through. And Craig did a good job of giving me all the documentation so that I could show him all of the plats and all of the neighborhood and all of the things that go with that. Mr. Palmerankey has an extremely deep lot. It's five hundred and fifty feet deep. From Grand Central, five hundred and fifty feet back to River Crest is how long his piece of property is. He has no access to that property. He comes in off Grand Central to his, to the front of his house, and that's it. It's landlocked. It's just the way it was done. So Mr. Palmerankey wanted us to get him or give him a right-of-way so that he could have access to the back half of his lot. The River Crest track where this water line is coming from, it goes right straight out of it, right across this lady's yard, and then across his. And that's the water line that's been in place for, we're guesstimating, at least fifty years. And so I went back and spoke with the lady about it, and she was very nice. Actually, she really didn't care. But when I talked with the code enforcement people, you cannot tie a new right-of-way into an existing subdivision. If you buy a lot and you want to put a road in, you can't do it. And so there is no physical way to get him a driveway to that back lot. Okay? And even though we have a right-of-way through her property, it stops at the fence. And we don't have a right-of-way through his property or the next piece beside it. It was just never done. They put the line in, no one, no one did it. And, you know, it's been, like I say, it's been there for fifty years, and so even if we get the right-of-way and all of the things put in it, you still can't drive on it. You can't consider it a driveway. And so he's basically stuck. I, I, there are, there is no way for him to get a drive into the back of his property unless he would buy the existing property over on Forty-Sixth Street and get both of those tracks, and then maybe you can tie it into Fourth Avenue. But it's got a, it's got a crazy offset to where, I mean, I don't think it'll ever work, okay? But you can't put in, you can't put in a right-of-way through a sub subdivision, because when the subdivision was developed, it was developed with that access, and that's the way it was designed. Okay? So I'm going to go back to Mr. Palmerankey and explain to him that he has no options here. He can't get a driveway into his backyard. If he would buy the other piece of property, which he has offered to buy it, then, you know, maybe you could do something, but I don't believe so. And the other thing is, the lot that is at the end of the T in Forty-Fifth Place, if that lady would have given him that, or sold him, whatever, that piece of property to put the right-of-way through it, then it becomes smaller than buildable size, so she basically would have ruined that spare lot that's right there. So it, I mean, the, those options are closed. All right? And you're looking at me with a questioning look on your face. Nothing?
I just don't believe what that is true, so. I mean, I've seen subdivisions throughout the city of Vienna, extended beyond certain subdivisions. Not sure why it would be that way in this case. That serves as restrictions. I know that Forty-Fifth Place subdivision was not bigger, versus the width-wise.
Correct.
Twenty-six or twenty-four, but right-of-ways, that's the only thing I can think of, why you could not extend that bigger right-of-way. We have extended right-of-ways to Fremont, to Lynbrook, London, Horse Hills. They have been extended through certain subdivisions, get to know. Everything I can say is just restrictions of width, that's it.
I'm just telling you what, I'm telling you what the code enforcement officer told me, that this cannot happen because of that. Because, like I say, that lady was probably, and you know what I would have told, I would have told Mr. Palmerankey, look, buy the extra lot from this person. I would, if I, if I had that much property, I'd buy that extra lot, okay? But you still can't put a road through it.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think you put a road through it, just, in our current subdivision rules, you're required to have a forty-foot right-of-way. And that right-of-way currently exists in Forty-Fifth Place and not in Forty-Fifth Right-of-Ways. I think that's a restriction, not that you can't extend one. President, you plan a commission, you should ask him, so.
Could he not just do like a private driveway randy through the neighborhood?
I think he wants, he just wants to split the lot, there's the issue.
Yeah, he wants to build two houses in that back section.
So once you split the lot, you have to have forty-foot right-of-way.
Oh, yeah. He needs more than just a driveway, right?
Access.
Yeah, okay, that's interesting.
He wants to build two houses and sell the lot. And I understand, when Forty-Fifth Place was built, it's a dead-end street, okay? And if you open that up at the very end of it, now you've included another neighborhood. People at Forty-Fifth Place thought they were getting a dead-end street with literal, little traffic. And you open that up, and at some point, you know, the guy that's on the other side will open it to Fourth Avenue.
Right.
And then you're gonna have a circle, because you come down Forty-first, you come out Fourth Avenue, and you drive right through the middle of Forty-Fifth Place.
Which would be great for maintenance, as public works out.
Yeah, wow. I lived at Forty-Fifth Place, I wouldn't like it very much.
I wouldn't either. I'm saying, maintenance of public works out, that would be great for us.
Right.
So, I'm sorry, I have a question then, because I'm a little lost. So is this a bargaining chip for him, then he's not, he, he doesn't want to give us right-of-way for the water?
No, 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 he's not, he didn't answer right. Come on, hit her with that fifty-year right-of-way.
Well, yeah, here's the thing, is ultimately, we have, we have a couple of different clauses of action. He doesn't want to give us the right-of-way. Um, there's, these are spot for sure, domain all of which require some type of court action. So what we're trying to do is, you're trying to just balance how much it's gonna cost to go to court and get an answer versus how much is it gonna cost to figure out a way to answer. If we can figure out a way to, I'm sorry, how much is it gonna cost if you find out? But I'd like to do a little bit of research on the road issue. What I don't know is lots of people, if he's, a lot of what he's talking about are part of that original subdivision, or if he could go through a whole subdivision process and pull that up, phase two or phase whatever, and kind of search, well, I don't wanna say circumvent, but just develop property and doing the process. So yes, you go to court and get an answer, and I suspect the answer would be
Okay, yes, that's my question, a matter of whatever. We, we have an end game to make this happen, okay?
And he understands that.
Okay.
He does.
It's just easier.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, the, the, the water line and the sewer line have been there for fifty years. They were there before he ever came, and just the fact that someone made a mistake and didn't get a written right-of-way recorded doesn't mean it's existing, okay?
That's not to say that there isn't, there wasn't. That's not to say the city act. Yeah, just sometimes when these things are going, it's like, hey, can we put this water line here? And the guy says, sure, and nobody just wrote a D L, or if they did write a D L, yeah.
So I don't think that's an issue. He, that, ultimately, that is what he's wanting, is he's wanting access to backyard, backyard so that he can split it and build two homes back there, and yeah, you, please, you guys talk about it. I'm pretty confident that he's right, all right? But he splits it, and I'm speaking from any that if he splits it, he's gonna have to come before the and I wonder if there is, before he spends a bunch of money on lot divisions or lot consolidations, surveying, all that stuff, any engineering that extends streets, whatever, maybe, is there some kind of a, I mean, maybe he could come to the planning commission with some kind of sketch and say, here's what I'd like to do. Then maybe we could have a discussion and Kevin, Kevin, right, or who doing? In his presence, and maybe engage Russ to see what we, what, what can we do to help this guy out and accomplish his lot. You know, I'm looking at Google Earth on a satellite image, and those houses that are at the end of Forty-Fifth Place, they seem so close to death. I don't know how you'd ever get a street view there, but, and what, anything you see from the aerial views, you see the edge of the roofs and the overhangs. You don't see where the walls are. But man, it's pretty, looks like it's pretty tight. All right, so we don't have an overhead in here.
Do we not have an Apple TV?
Right, here's the end of Forty-Fifth.
Is that south, incredible, right?
These two are south.
Oh, okay, okay, gotcha.
These two are south.
Okay.
Right there is where that modern sewer line goes, right straight. And it goes right straight across, and new line is going to go right down here to River Crest, all right? Right there is the issue. This is Mr. Palmerankey, right there. All right? But if you take that section out of there, this lot will likely be buildable. She bought that lot in two thousand fourteen. From a gentleman, you know, Bill O'Neil.
Let's give her a reference.
So, right there is the end of forty-fifth place. This is Mr. Palmerinky's property. The new line is gonna go right straight down here into River Crest. The existing line goes right, straight across.
So this is Palmerinky's right here.
Yes, yeah, right there's the, see the T right there? You're looking at it right there, okay?
Would it have to be a public street, Greg?
That's River Crest.
Right of way access to houses.
Has to be adjacent to a public right of way, forty feet, fifty foot road.
Unless you ask for variance.
You ask for variance, but would not issue one. Something like that.
That's the issue.
But he could do a forty-foot right of way, he just has to get to that. And that's the variance would come from how that bigger subdivision.
Forty-fifth place, it's the T. This is his, right here. He wants the right of way right there in here, yet the back. He's a property, the new line that's going to be constructed goes right along his property line, right here in, I was in the River Crest.
So you're gonna come down the A, you're gonna come across the line. So from the existing, that twenty-six foot wide right of way?
Correct.
He not extend this twenty-six of your existing?
He can't do any of that. This lady right here owns both of those lots. Okay, yeah, and if you take that out of there, then this lot right here is no longer buildable. It's not five thousand square feet.
So that law basically becomes worthless.
I, I think, well, we're getting way out of our area here. There's options, he could buy that lot, then extend that right of way up between six foot and forty-foot or fourth avenue. I don't see an issue.
I don't think he can do it.
I don't think he could do it?
I don't think he can. No, not him personally, I don't think anybody could do it.
Why?
I talked to Dwayne.
Uh, yeah, okay, I mean.
I mean, anything can be done, if you change it.
I mean.
But you'd have to, you'd have to do lots of steps. Right there is the right of way at twenty-six feet. This is his property here and the new line's gonna come right off here, go straight down here, and the existing line goes right straight through. Okay? What the mayor described, or what Kevin must have described. There may be some kind of subdivision covenant and that subdivision was proved. I know the ones, the plant commission, city council, whatever, at some point in time probably approved that. Then the street got built, utilities got, again. Then once they complete the city exception, it's not, you know, the, the, the city owns the street, the utilities. But what I'm wondering is, is Kevin pulled the subdivision back. Is there some kind of covenant in there?
That's what I'm, that's what I need to look.
That's what I'm wondering.
What if, instead of just limiting ourselves to uh, I'm just throwing an idea. To just assume right of way is a tennis development property, why not just make some people dedicate to part of property? We make it just a street, just throw it out. And that way he's.
According to Dwayne, you can't do that.
That's, that's different than him doing it in the city.
It's, it's not a matter of that, okay? You have to look at this now. You have a group of homeowners that bought property in a dead-ended subdivision.
That's a different, that's a, right, I know what you're saying.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And now you're going to allow someone to go in there and you're gonna allow them to access the street so they can have access to the back of their property. I'm not opposed to it one way or the other. If it were me, I'd buy the extra lot. I'd buy the lot. If I needed, if I wanted it that bad, I'd buy the lot. Okay, but according to Dwayne, you can't do it. So someone will have to get an answer for that. Okay?
I have to say it happens all the time.
I didn't say it didn't. I'm just saying that.
Even subdivisions built off of the existing thirty-foot right of ways.
Yeah, but I want you to tell me one other example in the city where it's happened.
Greenmont.
No, 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 no.
Yoplait Valley.
Where in Greenmont?
We got phase one, phase three, front fourteen.
Every one of them though connected.
Yoplait Pleasant Valley.
Every one of them connected.
Yoplait Pleasant Valley did not, heck, but it just, it took Yoplait Pleasant Valley into fifty-first street, because of the cul-de-sac runoff. That boom at the end of cul-de-sac, boom, here comes the road, goes to the Blimber. When did that happen? Um, geez, I wasn't here, so.
Long time ago.
So it does happen, okay? It happens, it happens all the time, different places.
You're building onto, you're extending a roadway or like Yoplait Pleasant Valley. You went right on out. This is different. This is in the middle of an existing neighborhood where. No.
Yoplait Pleasant Valley dead end. He hit dead end right at the cul-de-sac.
I'm not arguing with you, but they went out and extended it. They didn't put it in the middle of an existing neighborhood.
They went out. That day was existing parcel and they went out and made a new subdivision. Which this gentleman would be doing the same thing, especially about two lots. Yeah, the difference is that, that subdivision we were talking about, there wasn't any, no one else. So he was taking the road and extending it out.
Yes. Yes.
Here you have countless more.
Yeah. First, first off, fourth avenue stinks. Fourth avenue was so narrow because they allow parking on that, that it's one lane traffic. It's, it's almost like gridlock, okay? You wanna tie in more access to a already choked down street.
Like thirty-fourth street?
Yeah, it's exactly like thirty-fourth street, okay? And so that's the issue that I have with this thing is you're not making it better. It'll be better if you can build two houses, of course, but as far as traffic flow, uh-uh.
Well, it, it could happen no matter what. If a gentleman purchased the three lots at the end, he decided, and forty-fourth avenue, he could do it. He extended right to the thing. He's in the uh forty-seventh street. Seventy-three, road ended and the guy extended, keeps extending line of three of them new houses at, at the end of uh or Amy Road.
Oh, uh, Lynn, Lynnwood?
Yeah, so it does happen. I've seen that.
But there again, you're extending it, you're not, it whatever. Okay, I'm just telling you where we're at with the right of way with Mr. Palmerinky. I do not have it signed yet, okay?
So we, we, we have faith in you, Mayor, that you.
Well, I mean, he's a nice guy, he and his wife are very, both are pleasant.
There's a lot of examples where you have, and if I was, I'm no lawyer. I'm sure Russ up here picked the court, there's a good possibility you could even win that case. Well, yeah, you have a, there's a lot of apartments placed. Unless there's a conference in this subdivision. Now, you look at Millstone subdivision, okay, Jimmy Wagon subdivision. He has a lot up there, it's like two foot wide along the head to the road.
We have nothing to do with covenants.
Well, I know, exactly, I'm saying in that covenants, it says that lot will not be opened up for a right of way. And if that lot says that, maybe I saw what Dwayne is reading, that's what he's quoting. I don't know, I wasn't involved in it. Saying it has happened, extension of, there are subdivisions to new ones, so there has to be a way.
Well.
Surveyors, we've seen that.
At any rate.
All the time, right?
Dwayne was very solid. It didn't take him a second to give me an answer on this one, okay, so.
Yeah, that's what we're. That's what we're.
I mean. At any rate, so we're, we're working on our right of way for forty-fifth place. As soon as we determine what we have to do, then we will move.
So we have two of the three. Yeah, we're, we're good on that one. Uh, there, people are, are okay with it. I have not, I haven't signed a paper yet, but uh, reference to forty-fifth place, if, if you want, we talked about the extension. Uh, we're requiring a right of way from Mr. Palmerinky for the sewer line and uh, the water line, first water line, replace the existing water line. But as we look at that, the difficulty of getting that water line, which we wanted to get through the next subdivision, there's a lot of obstructions there, so uh, once we acquire the right of ways off of Mr. Palmerinky and the neighbor, I would like to extend that water line over to fourth avenue and tie it in, so that would make the system, instead of going through. It was to be tied into third avenue with the existing two inches, but I can run the six inch over fourth avenue. Tie it in, fourth avenue and fifty, uh, forty-first street. Also.
So you want to modify the drawing you have?
No, I wouldn't have to modify.
Wait a minute. The existing line that's there that goes right straight into fourth avenue is where it is now. You have a ninety-degree angle going back to River Crest. Are you saying you're not gonna go to River Crest?
No, I'm sure going to River Crest. I'm gonna tie it into existing two inches is now. But also I'm on the T end of the six inch into fourth avenue.
Okay.
Cause that would limit two dead-end lines, which is great for the water system.
Gotcha. All right, so here's the second part of this. So Mr. Palmerinky asked me, and the first thing was about the right of way. The second thing is, what are you offering for the right of way? All right, and I looked at him, I said, I'm sorry, we typically don't pay for right of ways, all right, okay? But he evidently feels like there's some value there of us putting that water line in down the, the boundary towards River Crest. And the fact that there's an existing right of way there, which we have to have a construction easement for. I don't know, I don't know what to tell him. What do we, how do you determine what you pay for right of ways?
What we're offering is utilities across this property. If he ever wants to subdivision of his land, the utilities will be there. If it doesn't, then he can do it himself.
The one going towards River Crest, he's not gonna subdivide that direction, okay?
One, there is a tie goes over River Crest, existing underneath the fence. Well, I think the one on fourth avenue then opens for his possible division of lots. And that would supply service, water service and sewer service, both lots.
So what's the answer then?
The answer is the value of the taps and the tie-in.
Yeah.
And that's what he's getting out of it, is he's getting the ability to not pay to tie in the city's water.
Okay.
I mean, that's the consideration.
I, I, I just.
You're not gonna make it, you're not gonna do a subdivision, you're not gonna split lots and then you deal these stuff.
Yeah, but I, I just know from personal experience that the gas company came through a piece of property that we owned. And we didn't want the gas line, we didn't want the gas line to come through it, okay? Cause the gas line's different because of the explosion and all that business. You didn't have a choice and they told you what it was worth and that was it. And it was like, well, I don't agree with that, too bad.
Well, you can, you can sue, is the, I mean, that's the answer is, you can sue over the value of what they, of what you think the property is, is worth, or how much you think the property has been diminished by having a gas line here. Cross, the question you have to ask yourself is, how much does that worth? You know, how much is your property value diminished by a gas line going across it?
A lot.
Well, there are other people that argue very little because we have gas lines that cross everything and that's the argument you're gonna get in. The same, and it's the same argument that he has, is he would have to make an argument that this property is somehow diminished by having a water through it when just about every parcel of property in Vienna has some type of water service attached to it, so.
Okay, we'll cross that bridge when we have to.
I would prefer to work it out in a more friendly way. It's cheaper.
Oh, well, this wasn't unfriendly, it was just how much.
No, no, I mean, well, let, let me refresh, a more ad, less adversarial.
All right, well, before I go back and talk to them, I want an answer from Dwayne. As far as the actual strategy on that, all right? Okay? Cause I don't wanna say something that's wrong. Right? Any other questions on forty-fifth place? Okay. Uh, the wa, water and wastewater system improvements project, great study. Okay, I have heard absolutely nothing from Michael Griffith and we submitted all of that paperwork to him. Uh, any, Mike, anything from Michael Griffith or Craig to you guys? Okay. All right, please let us know what the update is when you get it, because we haven't gotten it. Uh, the dredging of Pond Run and the dry dams, Craig.
Uh, like last meeting, we talked briefly about, you know, people we talked to online. Um, meeting with soil conservation department along Pond Run, they agreed it needs to be dredged. Uh, they're working their part, we're working our part. I'm just speaking to senators and congressmen and try and get some money up, up. You talk to them, you wait a little bit and you start pushing. People will disagree, it's right, so we just need to make calls, keep pressing them, try and get some money for that particular project, so. And again, the reason it needs to be done, um, this, this week off of twenty-sixth street. I had a culvert system fail. And it ruptured and blew up through his lady's yard and caused a big sinkhole. And the reason it failed because the outfall that picked from rain was under the silt on run. It needs to be done. Getting money, begging for the money, um, trying to get money for it is what we're. It's gonna take some time. We're not gonna get it done this year, I think. There's a possibility of getting it done next year, so I hope we, with the Congress, with the money that's out there, uh, we can get some of it.
What was the outcome of the mower?
I haven't heard anything yet, uh, with the mower. Again, it's, you know, we talked, everything's, government seems slow. There's reasons. We are out mowing the dry dam today or not, so hopefully that mower will be here when we have to mow in spring. Along with a, a nice grant so we can do the dredging on our own. So we'll keep working at it, so if y'all know any senators, congress delegates, be faster than. More pressure we put on, better off for us. We need our fair share of the money like other cities are getting.
Uh, last item we have this afternoon is the task order number twenty-two. And I think we've already discussed that, Mike, we'll see if we can get a solution to that next Thursday, okay? You know, it's funny, Craig, you talk about getting money from people. We have got so many requests in for money. I mean, and everything is a process. We've met with Matt Llewellyn this week about the seventeenth street bridge, twenty-seventh street bridge and twelfth street bridge. Okay? And you know, I, I have no idea.
The amount of paperwork involved in these requesting grants and funds is huge.
Yeah.
And I, I wish, I hope everybody understands, uh, I know we do here in this board, council, mayor clearly understands. So the engineering terms, but amount of work you have to do just to ask for the money. It's, it, it takes a lot. And when you see, when we do all that work and we see other cities getting the money, you kind of just get disappointed. Yeah, cause you have a big investment begging for grants, so. Hope you all understand that, everybody dealt with it, it's, it's a, like, that's what we're doing with the bridges right now. Yeah, I'm on the phone three or four times this week just answering questions that, you know, this is brown, so.
Yeah, I mean, we're doing all.
Calculations.
We are doing all we can to get our hat and a ring, but I'm telling you, and there's millions of dollars laying out there.
Millions.
But whatever the pathway is. Craig Parkersburg found it. You know, they got that one point eight million overrun grant the other day.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. The project came in over one point eight million dollars over the bid and they covered it. I mean, that's fantastic. You know, you just have to, I don't know, gotta catch them on the right day or something. And it's, it's bad because we have no staff. We have no staff whatsoever. If it weren't for Tony Tiano writing these grants for us, you know, we're reaching out to the regional council, we got Burgess and Nyquil. And, and, you know, you and I, all right, I mean, it's tough.
I mean, even Tommy back there, he, he.
Oh, yeah.
He, it was him doing drawings after drawings and calculations after calculations to show what these things cost. It's a lot of investment in ours.
And it gets a little disheartening after a while because when you keep getting turned down, it's like, I'm not gonna apply. But there's too much money out there. There just is. I mean, there's a lot. All right, um, any new business today? Managers report.
Uh, like I said before, we're having a lot of water breaks. Uh, this past week, I think we addressed like nine service line leaks. Uh, we had two meter rider leaks. Uh, I'm a, I'm a Saint Meter Rider, about ten years old, so starting to fail. Uh, I'm, I'm a Saint Meter Rider, about ten years old, so, starting to fail. Mainline breaks hasn't been too bad, so we are. Increasing the flow quite a bit since we turned Uber Road project online, uh, just kind of seeing results of that, so. Guys, we're, we're, I think we're tearing down three employees, plus I have. One, at least one off for injury, another one off, different things, and now, everybody's trying to finish their vacations, for some reason, the summer started yesterday and now it's over, so. Everybody's just trying to get the vacations in, and, uh, we're just working as best we can, so. We did spend some time, day down Spencer yesterday, spent planting, planting stumps, uh, getting removed, that we left down there, so, and we have cleaned the riverbank off at twelfth street. So we can kind of, everybody can walk it and feel it where that, the new proposed kayak ramp will go. You can, there's a lot of debris that we removed from that particular drip wood, trash, drums, all kinds of trash. That's not really a tally board, but y'all get a chance to kind of look at that area, we had acquired twelfth street back, so, that's been a plus. Get the garage back here, the twenty, twenty-fourth side, correct? So, that's a, that's a huge plus, and the garage, the old garage, uh, has gone paper, correct?
It's online, it's on, online today.
Paper, did, did be tore down, um, I just did a rec on asbestos inspection for, uh, the house we bought, tear down up on Eighth Avenue. And once that gets done, I'm currently working asbestos investigations on, uh, the demolition of the house, and. Hopefully, we get it out bid, uh, we can come back in September, approve that bid, and the house will be tore down before, I'd say, before first of November. Everything's moving, um, been busy, real busy in this department, so, winter months are coming along, three months is Christmas, it's not long, so.
Would we have to make the paving cycle this year for River Road?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it'll be done.
We have to make that.
Yeah, it's no question, it'll be done, next week, it'll start next week, week after, it'll be done.
Okay.
So, yeah, there's no question about that, they won't get paid till it gets done, so I know they won't get that.
Yeah, okay.
We can, we can still pave up in November, so, just the price has gone up so much, so. Business, guys got any questions?
Mike, you got anything today? Well, you came, I just didn't want to give you a.
Update on twelfth street? Yeah, pumps, uh, that contract hasn't been signed, uh, they have word pumps in October, start working on other station twelfth street, so. I thought that was on agenda, but. So, it's, it's good, it's going.
Oh, um, we have started the in order. Forty nine.
Okay.
Glad to cover rule two, if y'all, with that, we have sent our questionnaires to out, the people have gotten some good response, uh. We had, had some people say, yeah, I got lead pipe in my house, uh, I've sent the guys out, and we have actually done visual inspection on that pipe. So, a lot of people misunderstood what was asking, they didn't really notice that it was a lead pipe, so, that's good, that's fine, that's, we'll go out and inspect it, everyone we've inspected, we have not found any of that pipe. And what they've said, so, and we've talked to people, and they feel happy about it, so.
Just a heads up, when we have to start changing batteries in the water meters, is it simply a battery replacement, or is it going to be more involved?
Uh, the batteries are actually plotted in that head unit, so you have to replace the whole head unit, but your meters, I mean, you're looking at fifteen years of battery, we're at now, we're ten. So, uh, we do have some occasional fails, we had a couple blow up once ago, didn't we?
Were they Teslas?
Teslas, no, because they look like Teslas when they got done, they burn up pretty bad, so, uh, but, it's usually at that time you, you start looking about the whole meter replacement. So, I know they guarantee you twenty years, but accuracy starts falling off.
Okay, alright. Steve?
Yes, sir.
Kim? Cory? Alright.
There's two sets of minutes, one from special getting right, right.
The minutes from the July seventh, two thousand twenty-two meeting have been printed, posted, and circulated, are there any corrections to the minutes? And no objections, and the minutes will stand approved as posted, you're easy, what else? I didn't see the second one in there, I went right from June fourth or June twenty-fourth to the sampling report, so. Oh, I did, I just.
You said see it.
I didn't see it, yeah, alright, sorry about that, Russell? Good, alright, well, got you out of here in an hour again. Alright, meeting adjourned, oh, wait a minute, Brenda asked something. Ah, doggone it, I should have answered her right then. Oh, yeah, they, they're not in the city, we don't have to maintain their. We, we do, we do take care of their sewer and water, but they're not in the city, there's.
I just thought I'd ask.
Yep, I.
Thank you for your answer.
Yep. Alrighty, see you next month.